Good evening. I'd like to call to order the School Board of Seminole County Regular Board Meeting for June 7, 2016. At this point in time, I'd like to turn it over to Vice Chairman Lockhart for the invocation and pledge, please.
All right. Thank you so much. We rotate responsibilities for delivering some type of invocation or thought between each of the five of us and then our students. And so this school board meeting is my opportunity, and I didn't have a real great idea of what it was I wanted to share with you all until I realized that Flag Day is next week. It's June 14. And one of Dr. Griffin's three Cs when he became superintendent was citizenship. And so I thought this kind of tied in nicely to talk a little bit about Flag Day. Many of you may not know, I didn't know, until I started doing a little research, that we have Flag Day in this country because of a teacher. Did any of you know that? I didn't know that. Bernard Sagrande was born in Wisconsin in 1866. He was the youngest of six children of Nicholas and Susan Sagrande, who had settled and married there a decade earlier after immigrating to this country from Luxembourg in northwestern Europe. As a young boy, Sagrande sold scrap iron and rags to buy books. At 12, he worked as a sales agent for the U.S. Book and Bible Club, earning 25 cents for each book that he sold. He was a conductor on a steam barge on the Milwaukee River in the Wabaka area. I'm not from Wisconsin or Milwaukee. Inspired by his father, young Sagrande displayed an early interest in American history, and he was a devout patriot with a great love of the flag for our nation. At age 19, Sagrande became a teacher at Stony Hill School, where he placed a 10-inch, 38-star flag in a bottle on his desk, and then assigned essays on the flag and its significance, earning $40 a month teaching school. And with income from selling books, he was able to pay his way through dental school. In 1886, at just 20 years of age, he made his first public proposal for the annual observance of the birth of the flag, when he wrote an article titled "The 14th of June" in the old Chicago Argus newspaper. In June of 1888, at the same time he was graduating first in his class from dental college, Sagrande addressed a Chicago organization known as the Sons of America. In his speech, he emphasized the good that would come from a flag holiday. In response, the organization undertook to publish a magazine called The American Standard to inculcate reverence for American emblems, and appointed Sagrande its editor-in-chief. Sagrande's articles in this magazine helped to direct public attention to the flag and the date of its birth. Sagrande authored hundreds of other magazine and newspaper articles advocating recognition of the June 14 adoption of the Stars and Stripes. He was one of the contributing editors of the Encyclopedia Americana. One of his items was the recognition and meaning of Flag Day. He wrote a widely distributed pamphlet on laws and customs regulating the use of the flag of the United States. And on the third Saturday in June in 1894, think about that, 1894, the first general public school children's celebration of Flag Day in Chicago was held in five-area parks with more than 300,000 children attending. Can you imagine what that would have looked like in 1894? In the years that followed, 36 governors, scores of mayors, and five presidents of the United States sent delegates and credentials agreeing that Flag Day should be observed in all the states of the Union on the actual June 14 anniversary of the adoption of the flag. By 1916, flag ceremonies on June 14 had become so prevalent that President Woodrow Wilson issued a proclamation establishing Flag Day as an annual national event. Sagrande died of a sudden heart attack on May 16, 1932, and he would never know that President Harry Truman eventually signed legislation in 1949, properly designating June 14 as Flag Day. I just thought that was a neat story to share with you all, the impact that a very young man had with a passion that he had for this country and for our flag, that as a teacher, he went on to do so many great things that have such an important significance in our country today. And there are things that we all may be doing today as young students and as teachers and members of this community that we may never know years from now, the impact that we may have, but because we're doing things that we're passionate about, it'll pay back dividends in years to come for future generations. So that is our invocation. And with that, I would like to ask you to join me in pledging to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Lockhart. That was beautiful. Please let the record reflect that all five school board members are in attendance along with legal counsel and superintendent. I'd also like to recognize Jan Harmon with the Seminole County Council, PTA, Mr. Jed Downs with our Business Advisory Board, and Katie Burris, our president from Seminole County Council, PTA. Thank you all for being with us here this evening. Dr. Griffin, do you have any agenda modifications?
Just one, Madam Chair. The addendum for good cause is marked on our electronic agenda by a green flag named Addendum Item.
Thank you. And board members, do you have any items selected for removal or clarifying questions? Member Schaffner, please.
None, thank you.
Member Bauer?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman Lockhart?
None.
Member Almond?
None, thank you.
And none for me either. I think that's the first time ever. Do I have a motion for approval of the amendment?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second. Further discussion, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, signed motion carries unanimously. Dr. Griffin, do we have any presentations and recognitions this evening?
Yes, we do. Please join me up front.
Thank you to the school board and to Dr. Griffin, to allowing us to have the opportunity to present to you today some of our students who were winners in the National PTA Reflections Art Program. Just as a little background, this program was started in 1969 by Mary Lou Anderson. The National PTA Reflections Program encourages students pre-K through grade 12 to explore and be involved in the arts. Thousands of students reflect on the theme and create original works of art in the categories of dance choreography, film production, music composition, literature, photography, and visual arts. The 2015-16 Reflections theme was "Let Your Imagination Fly." And here in Seminole County, 36 of our 61 schools with active PTAs participated in the Reflections Program, thanks to supportive Reflections Program chairs at each school. The winners from each school were submitted to county-level judging, from county to state, from state then to national-level judging, and so on. So it has been a year-long program for these students. And with our focus on arts and academics and athletics in our schools, Seminole County has always had great participation in this art program. We received hundreds of submissions at the county level, so you know what it's like at the state and national level. So with all of that, we have eight State Award of Excellence winners from Seminole County, three of whom went on to also be National Award of Excellence winners. So of our eight National, eight State Award of Excellence winners, six of those students, I think, are here today. I'm going to go ahead and call the students forward, and I'll say a little bit about your category. And if you want to go ahead and just wait up here up front after you meet the school board members, we'll take a group picture at the end, okay? So in film production, Annalise Rosas from Winter Springs Elementary in the intermediate division. Also in film production, Anita Shiva from Sanford Middle School, PTSA, in the middle school division. In literature, Nisa Pender from Lake Mary High School, PTSA, in our high school division. In photography, Piper Polly from Wakava Elementary in our primary division. And in visual arts, Nadia Bloom from Oviedo High School, PTSA, in the high school division. Two other students couldn't be here this evening. Shanaya Bradwell from Goldsboro Elementary, PTA, and, let's see, Amber Chu, didn't make it either, from Galileo in the primary division. She also had a submission in film production. And in literature, Zoe Jackson from Hagerty High School. So congratulations to our eight State Award of Excellence winners. Now while you guys are taking pictures, I'll go ahead and announce, three of these eight are National Award of Excellence winners. And just so you know who they are, in the dance choreography, Shanaya Bradwell, who wasn't able to be here this evening, is a national winner. In film production, Amber Chu, and she also is unable to be here this evening. But in photography, Piper Polly. The National Award of Excellence winners are going to be recognized at the National PTA Convention at the Swan and Dolphin on July 2. They have it in Orlando this year. Congratulations. Well, good evening. I have some great news to share about a longtime partner of the foundation. My name is Susan Zettler. I'm with the Foundation for Seminole County Public Schools, and we wanted to share some information about one of our wonderful partners of the foundation and the school district. We want to acknowledge Duke Energy Foundation for the $40,000 grant award to benefit our schools this past year. Since 2005, Duke Energy has supported STEM education to the tune of $440,000. This year, 49 STEM projects were implemented in grades K through 12, 6,700 students were impacted, and their contribution was matched by the Florida State Matching Grant Program, essentially doubling their impact. The funding supported several projects at all grade levels. I'm not getting it. I'm sorry. I'm trying to get it to go forward here. It's not moving for me. I'm sorry. Just a second. Okay. Okay, great. Coding for kindergarten students at Bentley Elementary, pre-engineering projects at Millwee Middle, and renewable energy projects at Winter Springs High School. And we thought you might like to hear from some of our students.
Hi, I'm Jordan.
Hi, I'm Sam.
Hi, I'm Sarah.
And this is our Lyman Senior Year Engineering Project that we've created. Our project is a solar sunshade for a vehicle. The solar panel is a flexible solar panel that will replace a sunshade in a vehicle, and it will help keep your dash protected from the sun. It's also going to collect the energy that the sun radiates on your vehicle all day long. This electricity will then flow into our battery bank that we have created here, where the electricity will flow in on our outlet here. It will go into a solar charge controller on the inside of the battery box, and then that will go to a deep-cycle battery inside of the box that then powers the outlets that you can use to charge a phone, a laptop, any different type of device you would like to use.
Thank you, Duke Energy!
Hi, I'm Sam.
I'm Ethan.
I'm David, and we're from Millwee Middle School.
And we're making this solar car, and basically, the sun energy will go onto the, it will power the solar panel, which will power the motor back here. And what the motor's going to do is it's going to power these gears.
The gears, how they work is we used a small gear to big gear, and it allows for a lot of torque, which makes the back wheels have more power to push the car. I'll study engineering at Lyman when I go there next year.
I'm in seventh grade, and I'm planning to do engineering, and I want to study it at Lyman.
I plan to continue going along the engineering magnet program at Lyman, and when I pass high school, I hope for a career opportunity in engineering, and if that doesn't work, I'll do math and tissue.
Thank you, Duke Energy!
And we really appreciate the funding you give us so we can do STEM activities.
So hopefully, some potential employees for Duke Energy in the making. So our partnership extends far beyond the grant award we receive each year. Duke also sponsors events such as Arch Alive in Seminole, and they've held a school supply drive for Gift for Teaching Seminole, and their Duke in Action employees, pictured here, volunteered for various school projects. And we have some more good news just in. Duke Energy has approved funding again for the 2016-17 school year. So I'd like to call up Davia Moss, our foundation's executive director, and then invite Alicia Gonzalez, Duke Energy Government Affairs and Community Relations Manager, to come up for a photo and to present the check. Thank you so much.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Griffin. We have one more presentation for this evening, and it is an administrative transfer position or administrative promotion. At this point, I'd like to introduce Dr. Michelle Pisani. She is coming to the Department of Teaching and Learning, as the Coordinator of Professional Michelle is coming to us from Highlands Elementary, where she is currently the Assistant Principal. At Highlands, she has worked on introducing staff, students, and families to the leader in me as a school's program of enrichment. She also served as the Assistant Principal at Rainbow Elementary, and prior to that, taught at Evans Elementary. With her tonight, Michelle has her husband Ed Pisani and her daughter Rosalyn, so if they could stand up and be recognized as well. She, yeah, she was dying to come up. She's really glad that you all held this meeting for her this evening.
Dr. Griffin, do you have a recommendation?
That the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, signed motion carries unanimously. Student discipline hearing dispositions. Dr. Griffin?
Yes, I'm school board, that the school board of Seminole County approve the student disciplinary recommendations from May 16, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. At this point in time, I welcome the public. If anyone wants to address the board, they may come forward. You don't have anyone? Seeing none. We'll move on to unfinished, then new business. Do we have any, Dr. Griffin?
No, but I have a few items from superintendent's report.
Thank you.
One item is a read-only, that's the A-plus distribution. But I have two other items I just want to bring to your attention. The first, I sent an email out this morning showing the correlation between the third-grade FSA and Iowa, and I think it's a really important part of our discussion with the Seminole Solution, because at the end of the day, there was a correlation, a correlation of 86.8 percent. And FSA, of course, is a CRT, a Criterion Reference Test, where you test every single benchmark. Iowa is an NRT, Norm Reference Test, where you do a sampling, and this shows the accuracy that with proper psychometricians designing valid and reliable tests, that there can be a correlation. And this will be part of my discussion when I present up in Philadelphia, but I think it's important for all of us to be aware of that, because there's a big discussion, CRT versus NRT, and right here, we have some data to show that there is a correlation.
Excellent news. Thank you.
And the second item, just very, very quickly, the Florida Department of Education is looking at ways to implement the reauthorization for ESSA. They're looking for some input, and they'll be opening a website on June 20. I'll be sending that out to you, but also to the public, so that you know what it is in case we want to gather any input, and we'll have a statement, of course, from the district.
Thank you. So your cabinet will be developing a statement for our...
Yes, we will.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Moving on to board member committee comments. Mrs. Schaffner?
I don't believe I've had a committee meeting since we had our last meeting.
Okay. Mr. Bauer?
We had a Calno meeting, and there was some discussion that there needs to be a new focus in the organization. For those of you who have been around for a long time, you know that Calno's function has been altered, I think, a little bit in terms of our membership and which cities are willing to be involved and think it's worthwhile. You know, I think prior to the managers, mayors and managers' meeting being a monthly meeting, I think Calno was more relevant than it has been of late, and I think there's some movement by the cities to emphasize the municipal involvement, but maybe de-emphasize the school board and county involvement. So I'll report back once that evolves and we see where we're going.
I have to have a question. Was there any discussion about the statute under which they operate?
Yes. I mean, they've had the lawyers look into it, because one of the municipalities, which I'm sure you're all aware of, questioned the statutory language and the legal basis for the organization. And, you know, that their complaints based on our legal counsel were not warranted. You know, one of the, one of the things that was discussed is that Calno, unlike mayors and managers, is a public meeting, where anybody from the public is involved, it's very transparent. Mayors and managers is much more, I guess I would say, exclusive. And I'm not sure about the, I'm not an expert on sunshine law, but I'm, I'm not sure, I think there may be the mayors and managers, from our attorney's perspective, is...
And are you referencing Mrs. Beeman or Calno's attorney?
No, I'm representing Calno's attorney.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Who is Calno's attorney?
Lonnie Grue.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
So, you know, I'm not sure, you know, and one of the problems Calno has had is that certain elected officials, both at at least one of the cities and one of the county commissioners, are not big fans of the organization and don't see a need for it. And maybe think it's redundant with the mayors and managers, and I'm not sure that there may be, you know, the transparency of the mayors and managers was questioned by the public at the meeting. So, you know, I think there's going to be an evolution into, you know, thinking about what the mission of Calno is and how it's accomplished. But one of the advantages it has over mayors and managers, not from an elected official's position necessarily, but from the public's perception, is that mayors and managers is not as open a forum. So we're going to see where it goes. You know, I know my fellow board members are aware of support among elected officials and lack of support for Calno going forward. You know, it's not, it's not a big expense. The expense is not a reason for a municipality not to be involved, but, you know, it's been used in the past, as we know, as a reason for, you know, a certain municipality to not be involved. You know, I'm a big believer in Calno. I value the opportunity to share what's going on with the school system, with the various municipalities, in an open forum where the public is welcome to comment. You know, and I know a lady who sat in this chair before me was a huge supporter of Calno. Now, I realize things have changed, but I mean, who could be, you know, Commissioner Constantine actually at the last county commission meeting brought up the fact, because there's a certain commissioner who is not a big fan of Calno. He brought up the fact, you know, if he's willing to serve on the committee and there's no cost to the county, how could you be against that? It's a public meeting. The public is there, they can ask all the elected officials from each, each agency any question they want in an open forum. How, you know, what's the downside? You know, if, if you have elected officials who are willing to serve and devote their time and be available to the public, I mean, it's, you know, the commissioner's point was, what's, you know, I'm willing to do it, what's the downside? Why are you so against it? So I don't know where it's going to go. I think there's going to be a refocus of the mission, and probably, you know, from my perspective, it probably needs to be better advertised for the public. But we'll see. There are, but there are, I think there's enough on Calno between all the municipalities, there's enough of a, there's enough of a movement for change and focus. And I think personally, I think it's just, you know, I think the members of, some of the leadership in Calno feel like they're not getting the respect as an organization, and people don't understand the benefit of it. And I think there is a benefit, because from an informational perspective, you know, I get to find, it's not just about what festivals every city's having. You know, it's, it's alerting me to potential developments, multifamily developments, that I need to know about, because it could affect, you know, our need for schools. And these kind of things come up. So, I mean, we'll see where it goes, but I'll keep the board informed.
Thank you.
And I completely agree with what you're saying, Mr. Bauer. Anytime you have communication between governmental agencies, it's a positive. It has to be a positive, because we all need to know what the other is doing.
I've always thought that's one of the great things about Seminole County, is that we're all, we all consider ourselves partners, but I think, you know, in all honesty and frankness, I mean, I believe that the mayors and managers, at least from the people, the public that was at our last meeting, is viewed as...
We've had graduations going on constantly, not only our regular high school graduations, but Eugene Gregory had a graduation, and that was wonderful. That's really an important graduation, too, because those are students that are probably not going to graduate any other way, and that's a great way for them to get involved, and hopefully they're going to go on to even better and bigger things. Also, we had the virtual school. They had their retirement, and that's always interesting, because somebody said to me, you're going to virtual school graduation, do you go virtually? No, you don't, you go in person. So that was, but we had quite a few students who graduated virtually. The, let's see, I attended as a judge the Sanford Middle School Talent Show. Boy, you had talent over there at Sanford Middle School. I was blown away, could not believe it. I thought it was going to be an easy thing to judge. It was not an easy thing to judge, obviously. And the last thing I'll just comment on, because so many of us have been to so many other things, is all the retirements that we've had going on, it's been, it's been a lot of tears, because we had some outstanding people who have retired, people who have given many, many years to our Seminole County Public Schools, and we're very grateful to them for it, and those were tough to go to, but I keep telling them they can go back as a dividend, so, you know, told them they could list me as a reference, whatever, so...
Their future is bright with him.
You got it.
Mr. Bauer?
No report, thank you.
Vice Chairman Lockhart?
I'll just echo the great experience of graduations. I think since becoming a school board member, that's been one of my most favorite activities, to be able to see our students and their families graduate, and to be able to, each of us participate and represent one another at those, I think is just very meaningful. So thank you to high school executive directors and principals for including us and welcoming us at each of those events, because it's a lot of work on the part of your staff to put those things together. It's nothing short of a small army mobilization, and you guys do an excellent job. So please relay that to all of our principals and their teams for doing that, and for letting us stand up there with you all. It's wonderful.
Great. Mrs. Solomon?
I'll just echo the same sentiments. I thought graduation was awesome. I was really impressed this year how well behaved everybody was. So, that's it.
They were beautiful celebrations. Just wanted to add that this past weekend, Minnie Cardona, Dr. Griffin, and myself attended the annual Hispanic Chamber Celebration, and we actually had an SCPS table there, and the feedback we got was they were really, really happy that we were there to answer questions of parents, businesses were coming up, you know, saying, how can we partner with you? So I think that was well worth the time to go down there, and it really showed volumes that Seminole County truly does care for all. A breakfast of champions, we not only had the great academics going on with graduations, but many of our student athletes were honored at that wonderful ceremony, and Dr. Griffin, you were the keynote speaking there, and wanted to share with you a new relationship, hopefully with a gift for teaching. I'd been working with Harvest Time International, they actually had people fly in from the headquarters of Staples up in Massachusetts, and they want to look at a longtime continual partnership with us for national donations from Staples. So I think that can really grow into something really big for our students and teachers through that wonderful organization. We have a group that are going to be giving out scholarships within next week, the Bowkey Riders, and I got to work one of their events for them, and they are just so philanthropic to see so many of our bus drivers come riding in motorcycles and make donations, because they want to support our students, and I was really humbled to be there. Psy-Hi, our final submission, so let's all say a little prayer that things go well there, and a shout out to all of our wellness coordinators and all those at all of our work sites. We had their annual meeting with the wellness champions and insurance champions, and they had a keynote speaker for the first time, the president of South Seminole Hospital, Karen Fournier, and she gave some good tips on how to stay healthy, and shared her personal story of how she lost a lot of weight and turned her life around and became healthy, and gave little tips of the trade of what a bus driver could do when they have two minutes break. You don't need to join a health club all the time, you just have to be more cognizant of how you're moving and what you do. And I shared with Dr. Griffin, we had the receiving line, I'd never had the chance to attend before, but Hamilton Elementary School had their fifth grade graduation. When you speak about high school graduations, it was really heartwarming to see those families. They got to go to the Seminole High School Auditorium, which many of them probably have never been in, and I've never seen children dressed up so nicely before. It was like they were in their Sunday best, and they had all the relatives there taking pictures and video, and it was a really special, special event for those families and students. So I wanted to give a shout out to all the people at Hamilton Elementary. And congratulations to two trustees that are sitting on our board, also with Seminole State, the new welcoming center with the groundbreaking. We look forward to expanding our partnerships, hopefully within our school system and the state college.
We both forgot about that.
I can't believe that, I had that on my list.
No, I was there, I had, I got a picture with our mascot.
I was there too, but I forgot to talk about it.
Oh.
All right, well, we have photos, proof we were all there.
Should we pass that on to Dr. McGee that they forgot, they forgot to talk about?
No, that'll stay within, no one heard me say that. And Ms. Beeman, I think you have a request to this board?
Yes, board members, I am in need of advice and guidance regarding two pending matters. One in the Circuit Court of Seminole County, DO versus the school board, the other workers' comp matter pending before DOA, Sims versus school board, and would like to plan executive sessions. I think we're looking at June 28th.
And I know Ms. Marimus has it on our calendars already, but at this point in time, we just need to announce it at a public meeting, so...
What time is that?
Three to four.
Okay. Is there any further business to come before this board? Seeing none, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, everybody.